A couple of things I'd like to say before we start on the agenda properly. I'd like to welcome everybody in the visitors' gallery. It's nice to see some faces. And secondly, I'd like to thank Sally Smithson for doing such a sterling job during my year in office. And thank you very much, Sally. Right, we'll get on to the agenda. And the first item on the agenda is to elect a new chairman of the county council. So do I have a nomination for that?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'd like to propose that the current vice-chairman of the council, councillor Ron Oxbey, is installed as chairman of this council for the ensuing civic year. I think we've all known Ron quite a long time. He's not only a councillor, a county councillor, he's also a district councillor and indeed has been chairman of North Kestevan District Council. He's a very popular figure. I think we all like and know Ron. He chairs a meeting very well because he has stood in for you when you unfortunately couldn't be here. So I know he will be a very successful chairman. He did a very good job when he was chairman of North Kestevan and I think he will do a good job for the rest of us during this year. So I'd like to propose him as chairman.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Do we have a seconder?
Chairman, I'd like to second Ron to be chairman this year. I've known Ron for many, many years, in fact too many years I care to remember. Makes me feel old. But no, I lived in the same village as Ron for many years and obviously have known him as a friend and now as a colleague. I know that he'll do an excellent job and be a great ambassador for Lincolnshire County Council. And I know Di will be there with him because she was when he was chairman of North Kestevan. So I have no hesitation in seconding his position as chairman of this council, Mr Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bradwell. Do we have any other nominations? No, then we'll move straight to the vote. All those in favour? Any abstentions? Then that is carried. I think my next question to you, Ron, is would you accept this nomination?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I will with pleasure. And I would like to thank councillor Hill and councillor Bradwell for those very kind words. As Trish said, I've known Trish for many years, living in my home village of Hayington. And I hope I will do great honour to this council. I'm proud of being both a district and county councillor and I hope we'll do justice in this county. And thank you very much for your nominations. Into the hot seat, members of the council. I take this opportunity to thank my proposer and seconder along with all the members who have supported my nomination as chairman of the county council. But I also thank you, Andrew, for your help during my turn of office as vice-chairman. I know you have been a very good ambassador for the county and you and Lucille have both represented Lincolnshire extremely well. I thank you for including me in your term of office. I'm looking forward very much to my civic year, able to be supported by my wife Di, and hope to see and visit as many people in the organisations within Lincolnshire as I'm able. I wish to be called chairman during formal meetings and I hope that you will respect this. My chaplain hasn't been appointed yet, we're in, I think we could say, negotiations. My chosen charity for the year will be St Barnabas Hospice, who do an excellent job supporting those in need in our county. I shall wear this chain of office with pride and will fulfil my civic duties as chairman of Lincolnshire County Council with enthusiasm and dedication and will represent our county to the best of my ability. Di and I are looking forward to the year ahead and again I thank you for your support today and I hope for your continued friendship in the future. Andrew, it now gives me great pleasure to present you with the past chairman's badge. I know you will wear it with pride and it's truly well deserved, Andrew.
Right, Chairman, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, it's been a fantastic year for me and for Lucille. It's been an honour to represent both the chamber, the council and the people of Lincolnshire for the last year. And anybody that would think of standing in the future as chairman, I would recommend the position 100%. The highlight for the year for Lucille, we're getting emotional now, shouldn't get emotional, has been to see the British citizenships which we've done throughout the county and to see the look on their faces with something that we take very much for granted. It's not about my year now, it's about the future of Ron and Di's year as chairman and consort. So I wish you all the very best for the future. I know that you'll do an excellent job.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, for that. Do we have any members wish to comment regarding Andrew's term during this past year? And I have councillor Ray Woodton has pressed his button. Councillor Woodton.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. Many congratulations to yourself and I'm sure you're going to have a really fantastic year sitting in that chair and also attending many engagements across the county. I want to pay tribute to Andrew and Lucille who's carried out an excellent role on behalf of this council. He's carried it out in a relaxed manner but very professionally as well. Locally, he is known as Mr Polo. I don't know if you know that, but he's known as Mr Polo. He's very well respected within the community in everything he does. He carries it out professionally and as a gentleman. So sadly, his wife Lucille can't be here today because she's been very unwell, but we do wish her a speedy recovery and hope they take away many happy memories of being chairman and we look forward to joining them on a cruise in August. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Woodton. We have Robert Parker, councillor Robert Parker.
Going to start by congratulating yourself on election as chairman. It's a tough task, you know, going out there and representing our council to all the people in Lincolnshire. I'm sure you'll do it well. And I think it's fair to say that if you follow the example set by Andrew, then you will do well. I think it's clear from the way that the applause went in when Andrew stood down that he was highly respected, clearly a decent man, somebody who you can relate to. His chairing of the council meetings was not perfect, but he did it in such good humour and so much good style that nobody felt as though anything was much going wrong because he was part of us as opposed to distant as perhaps some have been in the past. So I think that we're saying goodbye to Andrew as chairman and I hope you continue in that same vein. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parker, for those kind words. Councillor, Mrs Angela Newton.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to congratulate you on your appointment, well deserved, and say a special thank you to Andrew. He's been very helpful to all of us, I'm sure. And I know when I've met him at meetings and at other events, he's done his best for Lincolnshire. He's been a gentleman and it's really been a privilege to be with him. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And we have councillor Chris Brewis. Councillor Brewis.
Thank you, Chairman. I particularly like to thank Andrew, who I've got to know very well, and his wife and we hope she gets very much better. And I particularly like to thank him for his number of visits to the, what will always be referred to as the Vladivostok of Lincolnshire, the Far East, the second longest distance that anyone has to travel from their county seat in the whole of England. And I'm very grateful. And I would invite you, Mr Chairman, I'm congratulating you, to repeat the thing and come to the Far East. Thank you.
Thank you. I shall take up your offer. Councillor Eddie Powell.
Thank you, Chairman. Congratulations on your election to the higher seat. Just a couple of things, as we were discussing this morning, mine's bigger than yours, so if you wouldn't mind occupying the smaller car park space when you come in, I'd greatly appreciate it. And also, before Andrew leaves, if you two wish to address me as Eric, I'm more than happy to respond.
Thank you, councillor Powell. I'm sure a £10 donation to my charity, we can arrange anything. Thank you. Councillor Martin Hill. Councillor Hill.
Just to, on behalf of all of us, thank Andrew for his year of service. Actually, when I asked him over a year ago whether he'd consider putting himself forward for chairman, he was very dubious actually. He looked at me, thinking, what's all this? But I think, you know, I think he really, I knew, I think we all know what a really nice guy he is and I think I knew, I thought he'd be a success. Like councillor Parker, I think the only part of the role he didn't enjoy very much was actually chairing this meeting, which I think, but as councillor Parker said, he was done with such a nice way that you forgave almost immediately. So thank you very much, Andrew, and I'm sure you will continue to serve your community well and indeed play an active part in the council.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Well, no more speakers. And for me, I would like to say my big thanks to Andrew and Lucille. It has been a great pleasure working with him. I've learnt a lot because obviously, although I was chairman of North Kestevan, that was 2007, 2008, things do change slightly, but it's been a pleasure working with him and I wish him well as a returning backbencher, we can call him. Thank you. Right, moving on to item number two, and we come to the election of vice-chairman. And can I ask from the floor, have we any nominations for vice-chairman? Councillor Davy.
Thank you, Chairman. Firstly, my congratulations on you being elevated to the hot seat in this council. I'd like to propose my good friend and colleague councillor Tony Bridges as the next vice-chairman of this council. I have known Tony for a number of years now and the years get longer, as I'm sure they do for all of us. Tony and I have both served on two authorities, both at East Lindsay and here on this council. He's been an exceptional chairman of the Economic Scrutiny Committee for the last few years. His business background tells me that he will make a great vice-chairman. He will be a big advocate for investment in Lincolnshire and supporting the growing economy of our county. And I think he'll be a great support to you, Chairman. So I have no hesitation in recommending councillor Tony Bridges as the next vice-chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davy. Do we have a seconder for that nomination?
I'm delighted to second the nomination. I would like to concur with everything that councillor Davy has said and I hope councillor Bridges continues to be a strong advocate for business in the county in his new role.
Thank you. We've had it forward, proposed and seconded. Do we have any further nominations for the post of vice-chairman? In that case, we will ask, are those in favour? Please show. Anybody against? Any abstentions? Fine. In that case, I would like to, I've turned my microphone off, to be my vice-chairman, Tony. Thank you. Switch this on, do I? It's all right, it's on.
Mr Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, fellow councillors, I would just like to thank my proposer and seconder, councillor Davy and councillor Storey for their kind words. I really have enjoyed being part of the council, chairman of economic scrutiny and then the environment and economic scrutiny for the last year. And I shall do my best to represent this county council at all the events that I'm commissioned to do. And I look forward to working with you, Mr Chairman, and indeed your lady, Di, and my lady, Trina, who is sitting next to Di here. So as I said earlier, I look forward to sharing your company on many occasions in the future and I will try my very best to represent this council throughout our wonderful county of Lincolnshire. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony, and I do look forward to working with you. I know you've been very keen to work with me and I hope we'll make a good team and represent Lincolnshire to the best of our ability. I'm sure that will happen. Right, members, ladies and gentlemen, we shall now move on to item number three and I will ask our acting chief executive, Richard Wills, to give us apologies for absence.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Good morning, councillors. We have received apologies from councillors Fido, Kirk and Rowe. Are there any other apologies?
I'm unable to get here. Thank you.
Thank you, acting chief executive. Any more? No more apologies. Item number four, declarations of councillors' interests. Do councillors have any interests they wish to declare or they can obviously make any declarations if it comes to light during the meeting? Okay, turning to item number five, the minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the 23rd of February 2018, that the minutes of this meeting of the county council held on the 23rd of February 2018 be approved as a correct record and signed by me, the chairman. Are we all in favour? Have we had time to read? All those in favour? Please show. Thank you. Any abstentions? Or in fact, any against? That's clearly moved. Thank you very much, members. Item number six, chairman to signify the appointment of the chairman's chaplain. I think it's just fair to say that I'm in negotiations at the moment and that chaplain will be announced very shortly. Thank you very much. On to the chairman's announcements. The 134th Lincolnshire Show. Will members of the council please note that this year's Lincolnshire Show will be held at the Lincolnshire Showground on Wednesday the 20th and Thursday the 21st of June 2018. It is hoped that as many members of the council as possible will be able to attend. Well, it's always an enjoyable event. All members will have received an email from the civic officer inviting them to take part in Meet Your Councillor, which gives members of the public an opportunity to meet and talk with their local councillor. The marquee for this will be located at the front of the county council stand. And may I remind members that an entrance ticket for the Lincolnshire Show will only be issued to those members taking part. If you have not yet replied, please do so as soon as possible so that the necessary arrangements can be made. The county civic service. The county civic service of dedication will be this year be held in Lincoln Cathedral, starting at 3.30pm on Sunday the 29th of July. Members of the council will be invited to attend this service along with up to four people from their local community. I do hope that you will put this in your diary and make every effort to attend what is always a splendid occasion. Thank you. Civic engagements. A list of civic engagements relating to the immediate past chairman and vice-chairman are available from the civic officer. And while I'm just mentioning engagements, already I've got plenty of engagements have come in and of course, we get clashes and already Tony has agreed to cover for me. So at this moment, I'd just like to give him the monthly list of engagements he will cover in for me. Here's the list, Tony.
Mr Chairman, I can accept one of them now.
Oh, sir. You will get one of those every month, by the way. Thank you. Right, moving on to item eight, the leader to report on executive portfolio holders and appointment to the executive and appointments of executive support councillors. Get my tongue round it. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. There is an item, it is reported on paper at the end of the paper's appendix A, I think it is. Verbally, basically, there will be no change to the executive members or their responsibilities. There are two changes to support councillors. Councillor Dan McNally will now be a support councillor to councillor Powell. I'd also at this stage like to thank councillor Turner very much for all the work he's done, not only supporting councillor Powell but previous portfolio holders and councillor, I can't remember, who is it?
Sorry.
Memory lapse. And Mike Thompson is going to support Sue Woolley in her role as looking after and observing on the NHS. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Okay, moving on to, oh, sorry, councillor Powell.
Thank you. Just to fill in the obvious blank, the leader left, councillor Turner's position will be filled by councillor McNally. Did you? Did you?
Is it too late to change my?
Now, it's normal to save the eulogies until after a member's no longer with us, but I thought I'd take this opportunity to tell Tony thank you very much for everything he's done, both for me personally and professionally over the years and also for this council and other councils over many, many years. And I can't believe he still stood.
Thank you, councillor Eddie Powell. Item number nine, statements and announcements by the leader and members of the executive. Statements by the members of the executive are detailed as report reference number nine in the agenda previously circulated. The leader's annual statement has now been circulated separately. Councillor Hill, would you care to speak?
We hear a lot of political chatter about populism these days, most of it nonsense. To the liberal elite, any vote that doesn't go their way is proof that the public have got it hopelessly wrong. What rubbish. From Brexit to Donald Trump and the rise of the eurosceptic parties across the EU, citizens knew exactly what they were doing when they went to the polls. They wanted a voice, they wanted to be heard and they wanted change. Of course, Brexit doesn't mean turning our backs on our European friends after decades of close economic and other links, but it will mean doing things differently in terms of trade, security, farming, immigration and many other aspects of national life. Above all, it's about taking back control, which is what the people intended when they voted leave in 2016. In the US, worries over jobs, immigration and America's place in the world led to the election of President Trump. While this shoot-from-the-tweet style can be very concerning, he's clearly a man who intends to make things happen. In foreign affairs, he could just possibly bring priests to the Korean Peninsula and who knows about Iran. Unlike his predecessor, Trump has also prepared, along with Britain and France, to take long overdue action against Syria over chemical weapons. On the domestic front, the president is seeking to defend American jobs against unfair Chinese trade and who can blame him for that? As with Brexit, there will be bumps in the road and very real challenges to overcome, but much of the overall direction is right. Here in the UK, voters rejected Jeremy Corbyn's hard-left Labour Party at the 2017 general election. Given its Alice in Wonderland approach to economics, it was a wise choice. The current Conservative government has taken the economy back into surplus for the first time in years. It also achieved record levels of employment while average wages rose by 2.8% in February above CPI. In Lincolnshire, residents gave the Conservatives overwhelming backing at last year's elections to this council. Since then, as I'll discuss, we've been absolutely focused on fulfilling our manifesto pledges. They cover everything from a successful Brexit for Lincolnshire to a low council tax plus improved highways and infrastructure. We're also committed to helping residents improve their health and wellbeing and creating stronger communities. In honouring our commitments, we recognise that people have put their trust in us and we have a duty to repay it. Those on the losing side of all these votes may continue to carp from the sidelines about populism. To the rest of us, including voters themselves, it's about democracy and common sense, which is just as it should be. I'd like now to discuss the appointment of a new chief executive to drive forward this council's agenda. As members know, Tony Macardle stepped down in February after more than 12 years in this role. I would once again like to thank him for all his hard work in helping to transform our council into a real success story. We also wish him well in his new role as lead commissioner for Northamptonshire County Council. Here in Lincolnshire, we're looking to the future and the council today will be asked to offer the vital post of chief executive to our chosen candidate, Keith Ireland. He's currently managing director of the city of Wolverhampton Council, but his career has taken him across the entire local government sector. Wherever he's been, Keith has dedicated himself to providing high-quality services within tough financial targets. As those are also our aspirations, I and the committee are all convinced he and this council are right for each other. When Keith starts, I know councillors and officers will give him a warm welcome and help him hit the ground running. and help him hit the ground running. For now, though, may I simply congratulate Keith on his success in a rigorous recruitment process? We were looking forward to having him on board. In my budget speech in February, I discussed the financial challenges facing this council, so I won't repeat those today. However, I must take issue with the pessimists who believe local government is being hit by a perfect financial storm. It is true that many councils, including this one, are seeing falling government funding and rising service demand, particularly in adult care. We also have a national funding formula that's no longer fit for purpose, as former Community Secretary Sajid Javid himself recognised. Since his move to the Home Office, local government is now being overseen by James Brokenshire, who will be leading the Fair Funding Review. The early signs from that are encouraging, particularly on rurality, and I really believe that reform is coming. Already, Lincolnshire local authorities are piloting a project for the local retention of business rates. That puts us at the heart of change at a key moment, which is exactly where we want to be. Over the coming months, we'll continue our Fair Deal for Lincolnshire campaign, arguing for a level playing field for all councils. A new system could then be in place by as early as 2020, dramatically improving our prospects in the years ahead. As I said, pessimists take too bleak a view. I prefer cautious optimism every time. Let's now look at some of this council's many achievements over the last 12 months, starting with work to boost the local economy. Greater Lincolnshire has been invited to take part in two pilot schemes developing national skills policies. The council welcomed a delegation from China and is strengthening trade links with India and Florida. We're progressing plans for a food enterprise zone near Holbeach, supporting companies at the cutting edge of agri-food. The new Team Lincolnshire ambassador programme has attracted 63 members, all promoting the county with one voice. Our rollout of Supervise Broadband is also on track to reach almost 97% of the county by the end of next year. Work will then start on the more remote rural locations, ensuring no one gets left behind in this digital age. Turning to highways. The Conservative manifesto pledged to maintain our 5,500 miles of road to the highest possible standard within available budgets. I'm pleased to say we are delivering on this, even though the task has been much more difficult by the hard winter. Over the winter, our gridding teams made the second highest number of runs since records began in 1985. I'm sure members will join me in paying tribute to them, paying tribute to them for all their hard work, as well as the farmers who support them in rural areas. The weather obviously caused a great deal of damage to our roads and a massive repair programme is now underway. Each year, this council spends about £50 million on highways maintenance. However, we have now an estimated £300 million repair backlog, and there's only so far our money will go without more funding for Lincolnshire. So what other successes can we celebrate on our roads? Work continues on the Lincoln Eastern Bypass, with Galiford Try quickly brought in to replace Carillion following its collapse. Phase two preparatory works are underway on the Grantham Southern Relief Road, which will link the A52 to the A1. The Peppermint Junction scheme in Holbeach was completed three months early and half a million pounds under budget. Another Conservative manifesto pledge was to protect Lincolnshire's most vulnerable residents. It's an area where demand is growing as our population ages and adult care is now our biggest single budget. Over the last year, we've had 38,000 new requests for support from vulnerable adults and carers. That's up 15%. As regards delivery, Health and Care Secretary Jeremy Hunt identified us as one of three areas to develop an integrated approach to personal budgets. Our pool budget with health partners will be more than £230 million this year, one of the biggest in the country. Delayed transfers from hospitals due to adult care remain low in Lincolnshire, freeing up NHS resources and improving patient outcomes. £3.3 million is being spent on independent living by wellbeing links. Support for Lincolnshire's unpaid carers is also growing, with 9,000 helped over the last 12 months. In other good news, a new medical school is to be established in Lincoln, increasing the number of locally trained doctors. Generally, though, the local NHS continues to face difficulties, with hospitals' trust still in special measures and EMAS struggling with response times. Last year, this council raised real concerns about the draft transformation plan, and those worries remain. As always, the situation is being closely monitored by the Health Scrutiny Committee, which speaks up for local people. It wants rapid improvements, not further excuses, and is right to do so. Turning now to children and young people. Last year saw new GCSEs in English and Maths graded on a nine-to-one scale. Local schools coped admirably with the changes, with passes above the East Midlands average. On admissions, nearly 7,300 children in Lincolnshire were offered a place at their first choice of primary school. That's 95%. Children's Services are also excelling on new send requirements, achieving 100% compliance on transfers. In public health, the new 0-19 service provides a range of services, including a named health visitor for all families with young children. They can also get support from antenatal education on our greatest presence in children's centres. In children's social care, we've been chosen to join the first wave of the Partners in Practice programme. We've also helped Rotherham Children's Services transform their performance through our input as an improvement partner. Other areas where we're setting standards include child and adolescent mental health, judged outstanding at a CQC inspection. Today, I can also announce that Ofsted have praised our work with children in care, one of the most vulnerable groups in society. In our manifesto, we also promised to create stronger communities, and we're doing just that. For example, Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue now offers safe and well visits, giving residents both fire safety and general wellbeing advice. Our staff have also attended 7,000 emergency medical co-responding calls alongside EMAS and the charity Lives. To make taxpayers' money go further, the Three Blue Light services are working more closely than ever, particularly on the use of properties. Highlights include a shared fire and police HQ in Nettleham, plus facilities planned or open in Lincoln South Park, Louth and Sleaford. Our emergency planning and business continuity service has also had its busiest year ever year responding to 40 incidents. On the environment, we have a new household recycling centre, which has opened in Boston, while a foodway scheme is being piloted in South Kestevan. On flood defence, we've earmarked £11 million for the Boston Barrier and a scheme at stamp end which has been completed. As always, trading standards, which has been protecting the most vulnerable against heartless abuse, such as scam mail and aggressive doorset trading. And finally, our registration service once again achieved customer excellence, while the coroner's service is reducing the timescales faced by bereaved families. In all these areas, we're committed to building a stronger Lincolnshire, and it's right that we should. The final manifesto page I want to mention, one that's central to everything we do, is spending taxpayers' money wisely. As members know, we always look to achieve savings wherever possible while maintaining the frontline services that matter most to local people. Despite that pragmatic approach, we've had to this year increase council tax by 2.95% plus the 2% adult care precept. In the years ahead, we're committed to remaining one of the lowest-charging English Shire counties. We'll also continue to ensure that we get maximum value for every pound of taxpayers' money we spend. One of the ways we're reducing costs is through one public estate, which is reviewing the properties we operate alongside other public sector organisations. Staying with property and living near Bourne myself, I was delighted in March to hand over the keys to the magnificent town hall to a charitable enterprise. It's now set to be developed into an art centre, returning it firmly to its rightful place at the centre of local life. As regards corporate support, the council is considering the future of the contract currently delivered by Serco, which will expire in 2020. It's no secret that there have been difficulties with parts of the contract, currently delivered by Serco, and the council has been working with them hard to address those issues. For the future, the executive has been looking at options, including a possible shared service arrangement with Heritford County Council for payroll. Fellow members, I've mentioned the Lincolnshire Conservative manifesto a number of times today, and I make no apology for that. At last year's election, voters put their trust in us to deliver local services, and that means honouring our group's pledges. However, it would be wrong for me not to recognise the real contribution made by councillors from across this chamber, whatever their political allegiance. In their role as local communities and on scrutiny committees, members play a hugely active role in the work of this council, as do our 4,500 staff. In this statement, a full version which is available in the members' pigeonholes and online, I've highlighted some of our many shared achievements over the past year. I've also looked at how we aim to meet the challenges of the future, which we know all of us are considerable. As we celebrate those achievements and confront those challenges, let's remember once again what we're here to do. Our job is to listen to what local people want from us and provide it. Call it populism if you like, I call it democracy.
Thank you, councillor Hill. On to item number nine. And this is statements and announcements by the leader and members of the executive. Councillor Hill? Oh, thank you. Straight on to item number 10 then. Appointment to the post of chief executive. Report by the executive director of Children's Services with responsibility for people management has been circulated. Is there a mover and a seconder for this item, please?
Councillor Hill? Thank you, Chairman. I would like to propose that Keith Ireland takes up the post of chief executive of this authority. It was a unanimous decision by the appointments committee. We initially started with a field of 25 candidates, and we had a rigorous process, but I think we all agreed that Keith clearly was the outstanding candidate in front of us and was worthy of the role. As I said in my speech, he has a long and strong track record of delivering of leading councils in this country, so I would like to propose that he is the chairman, becomes the chief executive, subject to the qualifications which are written down on the order proceedings.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Have we a seconder? Councillor Parker, thank you.
I'd like to second the appointment of Keith Ireland as chief executive of the Lincolnshire County Council. I look forward to working with him as leader of the Labour Group, and I'm sure he'll serve all members of the council well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Right, we need to vote on that. Councillor Mrs. Oberton?
Thank you very much. I would also like to welcome Keith Ireland to the position. And I see that from the background, there's a very wide range of organisations and councils that he's worked with, and very many of them are urban. And I know that it will be a very interesting process to really get to grips with the size of our rural county and the complications of delivering services over such a large area. And I hope that he would like to make good use of all of us councillors that are here, because each of us are ambassadors for our own area and would be very pleased to support him in working with our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs. Oberton. Right, we have no more speakers. Sorry about that. Your name didn't quite come up before I started, Mrs. Oberton. Right, we need to vote on that. Can we have a show of hands of those in favour, please? Thank you. Any against? And any abstentions? One abstention. Thank you. Sorry. Moving on to item 11. Questions to the chairman, the leader, executives, councillors, chairman of committees and subcommittees. Anxious to allow a good spread of questions across the chamber within the time allocated. I intend to allow 45 minutes for questions. I am expecting councillors to be disciplined because of the time available. Would councillors wishing to speak or ask questions please indicate by pressing their buttons to join the queue? And may I remind councillors that once you've joined the queue, you do not need to press your button when I invite you to speak or when you sit down. Thank you. And our first question is from councillor Moore to councillor Trish Bradwell. Councillor Moore?
The support for looked-after children in Lincolnshire is of great importance in ensuring that all children and young people get the best possible start to life. Following the focused Ofsted inspection into the council's Looked-Aafter Children Services last month, is councillor Bradwell able to share with the council Ofsted's findings from their visit?
Thank you, councillor Moore. Yes, it's very apt that this morning the letter was released. It's a public document now, so obviously, we can talk about and, you know, I can tell you how well we did. Obviously, the inspection was on about achieving permanence for our looked-after children, and the visiting inspectors considered a whole range of evidence, including discussions with social workers, senior managers, and independent reviewing officers. Ofsted did find that the leaders in the service are very ambitious for our children in care. They know their service and prioritise resources to support social work to flourish. This results in stable and experienced teams who deliver high-quality social work, which improves these outcomes for children. They also mentioned that we have strong use of children's networks, which is very important for family and friends, and that results in a high proportion of children appropriately leaving care through special guardianship. Also, they highlighted the creation of our supportive superstars. A peer support group for children of fostering families is an example of ambitious practice, and as well, our Care to Learn project, which has also resulted in over 60 of our schools participating in this pilot to promote looked-after children's learning through engaging our foster carers. I have to say, Mr. Chairman, I am extremely proud of our staff for the hard work and dedication that they give to our looked-after children. It really is excellent. And the letter, as I say, does highlight, you know, such good practice. But I also have to say, there was just four small areas that we need to look at and to further strengthen the offer that we give to our permanence of looked-after children. So, yes, delighted, Mr. Chairman. And obviously, our scrutiny panels and that will be looking at what the Ofsted inspectors said. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs. Bradwell. Our next speaker is councillor Rob Parker to councillor Martin Hill. Councillor Parker?
Good morning, councillor Hill. I wondered if you'd share with the council what's going on at the moment in relation to what we might call combined authorities? Firstly, combined authorities in relation to the four councils in the East Midlands, Nottinghamshire, Derbyshire, Leicestershire and Lincolnshire. And secondly, the proposal that may well be, having been discussed, about reigniting the Greater Lincolnshire Combined Authority. Here's an opportunity to share with members of the council where we're at at the moment.
Thank you for the question, yes. So where we are at the moment is the government, the new government now, obviously had some manifesto commitments about combined authorities when it went to the country last year. So effectively, they are now looking at ways they can roll out the current combined authorities. They're all mayoral combined authorities currently, apart from Cornwall, of course. And they are indicating that they are now interested in looking at how that can be rolled out. I think it is slightly confusing, because messages also coming about statements about unitary authorities are also coming from ministers as well. So there is an indication they are prepared to consider further areas. And I think it's felt that because we have quite an advanced state of play with combined authorities with the work which was done about two years ago, that maybe Lincolnshire could have been one of those areas where it could be considered. So again, we also have a new secretary of state, of course, so we need to be clear whether there's any change in emphasis or focus. We had actually, in discussions, all 10 leaders have had discussions, We had actually, in discussions, all 10 leaders have had discussions, 10 leaders of Greater Lincolnshire authorities, I should say, have had discussions, very informal discussions with government, and I think there is a feeling that it is worth exploring. I think there was also being made clear that the government is also now looking at developing a framework for combined authorities, because they don't have to have mayors, although mayors are still an option, but they obviously need a framework to set the stall out. I think the disappointing thing is there was, there seems to be no idea when this framework will actually emerge and be agreed, so it will be quite difficult to work something up which, until you know what the framework is, and that's got to go through government and it's got to get the agreement of all the departments in government, because obviously when you devolve services, you are actually devolving them away from the government department, so they have to be happy. So I think the short answer is, yes, there is maybe an opportunity to revisit this. I think I'll put it no stronger than that, but certainly there are discussions, and I think everybody, everybody hopefully in this chamber and certainly across Greater Lincolnshire would like more services to be devolved. On a personal level, I think it's not only about the mayor, and obviously when we consulted last time about this, I think people quite rightly said that what you're going to get with a combined authority is in effect another local authority, and I think people worked out that actually that would end up with a combined authority, a county council, district councils and so on and so forth. And I think that position would remain if the government would continue, insist on having all the rigmarole which goes towards a combined authority. I think the point we would like to get to is, well, can't we just have a joint committee where we all come together, elect a chairman across from Lincolnshire, and then that person could be the accountable person which government could look at? That would be the ideal scenario, but I have to say that is, that is some way off where some decision will be made, I have to say. The second is there are some very vague discussions about some sort of regional cooperation, shall we say, in terms of devolving stuff on a regional basis across the four councils of Derbyshire, Lincolnshire, Leicestershire and Nottinghamshire. Again, that is quite vague as well, and it would also have to include the three cities of Derby, Leicester and Nottingham, and I think it's been also made clear if you went down the combined authority route or devolution route, the government would consider that to be a city region, and they would thought there would have to be a directly elected mayor. So there have been some discussions, but I'm being totally frank with you, I'm not at all optimistic that this will get very far, but it's still very important. We try and work across the East Midlands with our colleagues and partners so we can share services, we can hopefully devolve stuff from government if that's appropriate, and indeed make account of balance to the work which is going on in the mayoral combined authority of Birmingham. So obviously the government is putting extra resources into where these combined authorities have mayors, and we need to actually step up to the plate and make sure we are doing that. I think the example in Greater, in Cambridgeshire and Petersborough is not a good example, because that is one of the few areas and two tier areas where we have a mayoral combined authority, and I don't think that's proving to be a particularly successful or easy road for anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hill. My next question is from councillor Mrs. Kate Cook to councillor Davies. Mrs. Cook?
Okay, thank you, chairman. Thank you, chairman. Firstly, Sleaford residents are becoming increasingly frustrated with the delays in filling potholes, and I'm sure they're not alone. In fact, this week it was front page news in the Sleaford Target, more craters than the moon is the title. I've been told by you and the highways manager that it would take a little time to catch up from the delay caused by the winter pressures, which were considerable, and I think everyone did a magnificent job, as councillor Hill has mentioned in his speech. But do you have any idea of when we will have caught up with the recent backlog for potholes and when road repairs will be completed within our agreed time scales again? And secondly, I've just returned from rural Cumbria, and the taxi driver I had was telling me that if he reports a pothole in the morning, it's filled by the lunchtime, and you just can't see any potholes on the roads there. So whilst realising that the issues facing Lincolnshire regarding its road network and funding are difficult to compare to other counties, can you please let us know if we are sharing practices with other counties? Thank you.
If in doubt, spread bad news, sells newspapers, doesn't it? Regarding the backlog of potholes, we expect by the middle of June to be in a position where the recent backlog will be cleared. However, as the leader has alluded to, that doesn't really impinge on the £300 million maintenance backlog we have in common with most of local authorities. In terms of Cumbria, I think that's an interesting example, is their highways team are currently being inspected by the Department for Transport over issues they have around a pilot and some issues there. And having spoken to my opposite number in Cumbria, he will be thrilled to be told by taxi drivers, a notoriously critical group of any local authority, that there are no potholes in Cumbria. I have to say, my own experience in Penrith relatively recently was somewhat different. In terms of sharing best practice, as one of the lead authorities, highways authorities in the country, we are at the forefront of sharing best practice, both through the local Government Association and in particular, we are one of the founding members of the Future Highways Research Club, which operates out of Cranfield University, which has taken over from the old Department for Transport HMEP grouping. So we are very much at the forefront, and a lot of authorities come here to see how we do things. That's not to say we can't do things better, and we continue to try and do so.
Thank you, councillor Davies, for your reply. Our fourth question comes from councillor Stokes to councillor Davies again. Councillor Stokes?
Yes, thank you, chairman. We're going back to potholes on this one. I was wondering if the portfolio holder for highways could give the council an update on how pothole repairs were going throughout the whole county, please?
Thank you. Yes, I mean, January, we saw a marked shift in our approach to potholes, as members will be aware, as we took to a more first time fix approach. All potholes as of this year now should be cut out, potentially with a still saw, and then ideally a hot material compacted in. There will be some exceptions, depending on the material base that's going into, whether or not it can be cut into, and we've, in addition, we've brought in extra gangs, we've diverted gangs from non-essential duties into potholing, and we're also seeing a far bigger role out of our patching and repair process. And this is on top of that, we also have additional resources from government and from our own reserves, massing some £12 million that we're putting into it. In terms of numbers, for example, in January, we filled about 2,200 potholes. We then went through a difficult period in February where we dropped down to about 1,100, but I'm pleased to report last month we filled almost a record of over four, nearly four and a half thousand potholes. Now, by its own measure, the fact that there are that many potholes in our, on our network isn't a good sign. The fact is that we are getting on top of the process, and I think anecdotally, it's starting to feel across the county, and I do a lot of wardwalks with members, now for example, recently I was in Tetney with the newly installed vice chairman, and there it does feel like generally that the numbers saying that the roads are getting in better condition is matched with a, with an expectation, and certainly parishes are starting to pick up on that as well.
Thank you, councillor Davies. My next question is councillor Cullen to councillor Mrs. Woolley. Thank you.
Congratulations, chairman. What are you doing about, sorry, what are you doing about the temporary closure of the children's ward at Boston? My residents have concerns, as the school is already closed in Mablethorpe.
First of all, congratulations, chairman. Delighted to see you in place. What are we doing about the closure of the children's ward? As you know, it is an NHS hospital, and it's NHS services. We're doing all we can to support the particular, and it all comes under United Lincolnshire Hospitals Trust. As you know, it's in a very fragile state at the moment, and also, as you know, there was a meeting last night in Boston to discuss the children's ward, and before that in Skegness, and I think there was a large group at Skegness as well. And it's one of those things, what, what do we do? What do we do? We've, we've got a ward, we've got a demand, but it boils down to the fact, where's the workforce? And we can shout and yell and scream as much as we want to, but if no one's either willing to come to work in Boston Children's Ward, then it's what do we do with poorly children? We've got to look after our residents, we've got to look after our families, and we all want to do that, it doesn't matter whether it's you, me, rest of the council, or indeed the wider population. And I have to say that I was, I was really pleased to see a note earlier this week that apparently the secretary of social care, Jeremy Hunt, is minded to lobby the new Home Secretary, because we have a bit of an anomaly around visas, and whilst paediatricians and A and E doctors can sort of be fast tracked, other clinicians can't. And so the, Jeremy Hunt is looking at the possibility of seeing if the, if the Home Secretary could possibly look at a visa specific to NHS qualifications. And I'm also delighted to say that I understand that Matt Warman, the local MP, is supporting that initiative. That to me is a really sensible way to go, because we, it's still, it's great, we've got the medical school coming along, but that's sort of, by the time they're qualified, we're looking at 10 years. We want people in post now, and it makes an awful lot of sense to go out to those wider countries and offer the opportunity. Anecdotally, I am very aware that particularly in Australia, there's an awful lot of qualified clinicians who either want to come back to this country or who want to come to this country, and they can't because they can't get a visa. So, you know, that for me is a really, really easy, quick win, and I would like to ask that we all support that initiative. That has to be the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs. Woolley. Councillor Bruce to councillor Davey. Councillor Bruce?
Thank you very much, chairman, and congratulations as well. Colin, mine is not on potholes, I'm living in Cambridgeshire in Norfolk, and I can assure you, I don't get as many complaints because they're a lot worse over the board than they are our side, but will you support the growing move for special local government associations, special interest groups for those counties, unitaries, districts and other councils which are disproportionately affected by the iniquitous practice of treating internal drainage board precepts, which are only collected for efficiency sake, but they're being treated as council expenditure, which they're not, to the disadvantage of very areas in our own county and some of our neighbours, which are most affected? And I've also raised this because of the inadequacy in the way this, we've attempted to get this district raised through the coastal group, and I would like to know whether you, like councillor Lord Porter Spalding, would support this initiative?
Thank you, councillor Bruce, for the question. The simple answer is yes, of course I'll support, support that. However, I should say, there has been a lot of work going on behind the scenes over recent months, the national RFC chairs, of which my colleague councillor Poll is one, have been working very closely with Gary Porter, the leader of the LGA, with DCLG and other government departments to address this issue, and I think we are hopeful that an announcement will be made in the not too distant future. So that should hopefully answer the question. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davey. Councillor Skinner to councillor Mrs. Woolley. Councillor Skinner?
Thank you, chairman, and congratulations. Part of what I was going to say is my thunder's been stolen by councillor Cullen, who did attempt to join our early meeting, but there we go. Could the executive member for the NHS liaison and community engagement, councillor Sue Woolley, update this chamber and the many concerned members of the public of Boston and Skegness areas with regard to the NHS ongoing strategy and plans for paediatric services at Boston Pilgrim Hospital? Thank you.
I'm minded to say, how long have you got? Because I think we could all get camp beds out just to try and answer that question, councillor Skinner. I'm not going to repeat what I've already said. There's no doubt about it, everybody is extremely concerned around the issues at Boston and indeed within the wider trust. And just to give you all a bit of a, an NHS learning session, as you know, in Lincolnshire, we have got seven NHS organisations, and through the NHS five-year board view, there is an expectation that those seven organisations work together locally on a footprint, on a Lincolnshire footprint, to deliver services to all of our residents. And you might think, well, why don't they do that already? And to a greater and lesser extent, they do. But ultimately, they've got to work towards something that is sustainable, so then that's where that dreaded acronym comes in, the STP. And whilst they're, and I will defend them, they are trying to come up with something that is sustainable for residents and is good, safe, high quality services for all our residents. The bottom line comes back to this workforce issue, that if the people aren't willing to come and work in our county, then what, what do we do? We have got to help them work towards Plan B and a successful Plan B at that. And so, as I've already said, that whilst there is the one particularly challenged trust, the hospital trust, we've got to find ways that together as a team, and ourselves included, when you then put in social care, to find the best for our residents. So it's, it's, it's difficult, it's very difficult, and there aren't any quick wins. But as I've already mentioned, I think that this visa opportunity does provide a realistic opportunity to get somewhere.
Thank you, councillor Mrs. Woolley. My next question, councillor Matthews to councillor Colin Davey. Councillor Matthews?
Thank you, chairman, and congratulations. Colin, after the beast from the east wiped out tourism on the Lindsay coast, we were enormously pleased to see the sun shining on the Maybank holiday, and businesses and residents were thrilled. In fact, crowds flopped in. Unfortunately, not everybody contributed to the economy. The 30 mobile homes that parked on Hutoff Car Terrace and in Moggi's Eye and other places abuse our facilities and put at risk the really good work that we are doing in the Coastal Country Park in developing the observatory. We also had traffic congestion issues in Mablethorpe and in Sandedland and Sutton-on-Sea, and at Andaby Creek, where there were car wars. Please, could you explain to us what you're doing to enforce the local bylaws and to ensure that we can have a really positive vision? I know you have one, but can you explain what is for destination tourism along the Lindsay coast that protects residents' rights but actually ensures that visitors pay their way?
Thank you, councillor Matthews, for the question, and I've got to give you a fairly lengthy explanation, so I will not try and eat into everyone else's question time. The bank holiday weekend saw Lincolnshire basques, as you said, in record temperatures, and it was good to see so many visitors travelling to our coastline, and indeed actually to inland attractions such as the RAF 100 event at the Castle, Belton House, and, you know, we've got a great offer in our county and people came to enjoy it. Obviously, this in many areas caused congestion, not just in our coastal resorts but on many of our roads, but increasingly so in the popular Coastal Country Park area between Sutton-on-Sea and Chapel St Leonard's. Particular issues are experienced at times like this at our council-owned sites at Andaby Creek and Hutoff Bank. Whilst these issues are not felt all year round, during the holiday season, the sites can become full very quickly, and the officers within my portfolio will now be seeking to redouble our efforts to undertake enforcement of both the on-street parking issues at Andaby Creek and of the bylaws governing the usage of all our sites. With regards to enforcement of on-street parking restrictions, parking services will arrange for appropriate officers to visit Andaby Creek as part of the mobile patrol to enforce the no-waiting restrictions. This is part of the normal patrolling pattern during the tourist season when we visit on a regular basis. This will be complemented by the use of a private security firm to monitor and enforce the bylaws on the parking sites themselves during the anticipated high volume period over the forthcoming Whitbank holiday weekend. This will be aimed at combating the parking behaviour of a minority of people who would rather inconvenience other visitors, residents and possibly the emergency services than seek a more appropriate location to leave their vehicle. Enforcing the bylaws will also send a clear message that this council will not tolerate the use of the sites as free camping areas, where in particular large motorhome users have got into the habit of selfishly parking across multi- have got into the habit of selfishly parking across multiple bays and stopping other users from enjoying the sites, as well, of course, a loss to the economy of not using one of the many sites in the local area run by businesses. This work is part and parcel of the programme being undertaken by my officers to promote and improve the area. Recently, I had the opportunity to authorise the erection of signage welcoming visitors to the Coastal Country Park area. Alongside the imminent opening of the Coastal Observatory at Chapel St Leonard's, we'll be investing in our coastal access sites, such as car park improvements at Andaby Creek, and exploring opportunities to provide better services at Hutoff Bank, and in addition to improving awareness and usage of the other parking facilities in the area besides those most often used at the creek and at Hutoff. Our countryside services team are also putting forward a bid for the wider coastline to be designated as a heritage coast. We are working with landowners and users to make improvements to access to the countryside inland of the coastline, provide greater options for exploring the area, visiting local services and shops, and to take full advantage of the new national coastal path. This important access route is currently being implemented in the area and will be officially opened in the autumn of this year, when we have completed the construction of an improved promenade near the Coastal Observatory to ensure the path is accessible to all. I hope that answers the question, councillor Matthews. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davey, for your very explicit answer there. Okay, my next question comes from a councillor who made, I won't say a complaint about me last year, but he was concerned that when I was vice-chairman, he couldn't actually see me and keep his eye on me. So I'm going to put that right by, obviously, sitting here, and he knows who he is, councillor Kev Clark, who will ask the question to councillor Nick Worth. Councillor Kev Clark.
Congratulations, Chairman, Ronan, to your vice-chair as well, and I can't see you now, thank you. Morning, Nick. Right, I wish an update on the situation with Bootham Library. It seems rumours are flying about what's happening to the future of the library. However, being a councillor for that division, I haven't been given no information. So basically, is it a secret? Or what's the future for a library with a catchment area of 22,000 people? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, many congratulations to you, and thank you, councillor Clark, very nice to see you. Yeah, I'm not keeping any... I haven't had a chance to have a chat with him for a while, actually. Yeah, it's no big secret, learning communities who run the three libraries up there are sadly stopping work as from today, or ceasing trading, I think is the appropriate word, as from today. I'm pleased to say that we have been aware that they've been in a fairly wobbly position, shall I say, for a little while, so we have got Greenwich Leisure have been extremely helpful, and we'll be going in there, taking on the running of all three libraries. And they will be starting on the 21st of May. There will be a changeover for next week, so next week the libraries will be closed. We'll also say for those that may be worried about book loans, they're also extending those book loans for three weeks, so they don't have any issues with those. And I'll be pleased to update you any more as I hear any more, but that's pretty much half the press.
Thank you, councillor Worth. Right, we're slightly behind schedule if we want to get all the questions in, so I can ask members just to be a little bit more brief if they can. My next question, councillor Mrs Dodds to councillor Trish Bradwell. Councillor Dodds.
Thank you, Chairman, congratulations on your post. Children's services at Lincolnshire County Council pride themselves on using up-to-date strategy and policy founded on the very latest and best social policy research. Can councillor Bradwell point me in the direction of such research that justifies the £50 million for grammar school expansion that was announced by the government today?
Oh, thank you for that question, councillor Dodds. I wondered whether someone would ask me about that. Well, actually, I think it's a good news story. We have grammar schools and we have secondary schools in this county. As a county council, I know some on the other side might not agree with us, but we do support grammar school education, if that's right, for someone's child. So actually, this morning, I thought, yes, that's a good idea. £50 million? I don't see that going very far. It won't build, you know, it would build just one new school, but it would probably build some extensions if grammar schools want to extend. So actually, I'm not going to say it's terrible, but what I would say is they need to be put in the right place. So a grammar school that's wanting to expand, that's great, but actually, we don't want to see other schools suffer in the other way. So I think we would need, if grammar schools want to do that, we would like to work with them, because actually, and we do have a good relationship with all our schools in the county, so yes, I support that. As I say, it's not a lot of money when you look at how much classrooms in that cost. Okay?
Thank you, Mrs Bradwell. Our next question, councillor Angela Newton to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Davies, I'm pleased to note that the government recently awarded £12 million to the Spalding Western Relief Road and congratulate officers and members who were involved in putting forward the case for the much-needed relief road. However, some residents in my ward now complain, one of the local papers report that consultation will not take place until after official plans have been submitted. Can councillor Davies please tell us why, on such a major scheme as this, there will not be some form of public consultation or exhibition of plans prior to submission of a planning application, as there was with phases one and two in 2014? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for the question, and thank you for the commentary as well. The money was awarded for the northern section of the road, as I think you're probably aware. The detailed planning for that and process was part of the South East Lincolnshire local plan, and in particular, the route was examined in some detail publicly as part of the examination in public, so that has largely been decided. I think perhaps, and you as a local member will know better than I, the middle section is going to be the most controversial. Now, when we go in for planning, then there'll be consultation for the northern section as part and parcel of that, as normal. In the summer, we will begin a very wide-ranging consultation for that middle period, because middle section of the road, because that undoubtedly, around the 151 area in particular, is going to affect people's homes, and that's where there will be a very lengthy consultation, and of course, you will be very closely involved with it, as will all the local members.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Councillor Rob Foltz to councillor Davies.
I think there's an error there, Mr Chairman, I didn't actually have a question for him.
I was handed a piece of paper by our acting chief exec, I'll have to give him a telling off after... Right, councillor Mrs Overton then to councillor Davies.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and congratulations. Roads are a big issue for me, and I know it's been raised already, but I'm going to do it again. We have had a significant increase in the amount of dwellings in our area, an increase in traffic, increase in heavy traffic, and there's a consequence of that if you do not provide the matching infrastructure and services. We see congestion, difficulty in accessing some services, been discussed with hospitals, ambulances and GPs. We also see broken roads. I am deeply concerned, amazed even, how huge, dangerous potholes can be left in 60-mile zone areas, right where the wheels of the cars would go, or where a bicycle would go, or a motorbike. These are serious death traps. I look up on the website, they've been reported in January, still there. How is that possible? I look at our contract, so I'll finish, thank you, Chairman, I look at page 39 on the document, getting to the question, we have there 62% performance, performance of 28 days to fill a dangerous pothole in a rural area. Can I ask, please, if those targets are going to be looked at, because 28 days is a long time if you're only going to achieve 62%, and if we can do something about the ease of reporting on the website, which is very clunky, and I've submitted nine improvements? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, as always, the devil is in the detail, but I would like to start reiterating that sadly, money doesn't grow in trees, despite what those in Wonderland might like to believe. The reality is that we cannot be expected, and I've made this point numerous times via communication to all members, to click our fingers and fix untold damage to our roads. We have a huge backlog, I've already outlined in some detail, both in writing and verbally, the lengths we're going to. To answer the specific questions, yeah, the portal isn't very good, it's very disappointing the performance of it. We are undertaking a review at the moment and adopting potentially a third-party system of operation that will allow a smoother and clearer view. However, I don't agree that we should be reviewing at this point our targets. The fact is, without a fundamental review of national funding for roads, and I would hope somebody who spends so much time in Westminster would understand the problems, clearly not, of facing our, as a funding authority, the problems we have here in Lincolnshire, the reality is, we can't start adjusting targets and expecting processes to change as a result of it. Function is a product of spend, and without additional spend, we're not going to see additional function.
Thank you, councillor Davies. The next question is from councillor Ray Woodton to councillor Martin Hill. Councillor Woodton.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. May I congratulate your vice-chairman first? Martin, as leader of this council, will you support a joint letter with the leader of Southcaster Stevenage District Council, councillor Matthew Lee, to the ULHT and South West Lincolnshire CCG, calling on them to publish their plans for the future of healthcare at Grantham Hospital, and in particular, the overnight closure of the A and E? Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Yes, I would support that, and I have already publicly stated that it is now beyond time that the NHS locally publish their plans for Lincolnshire. It was December 16 when the draft, the first version of the STP was published, and this council unanimously rejected it, although we must note that there were many parts of that plan which we supported. And it wasn't just the issue of Grantham A and E, it was the issue of Boston, children's services, the meeting last night which I attended, and various other things. And I think one of the bottom of all this, as councillor Woolley has quite rightly said, is the issue of recruitment and retention. And people aren't going to come and work in Lincolnshire and stay in Lincolnshire if there's doubt about what the future lies, if there's doubt about whether their job will exist in future. There's too much of an over-reliance by the NHS on temporary and locum staff, who are not only more expensive, but also puts an additional strain on those full-time staff who then have to oversee and supervise the temporary staff. So I think it's not, I will support the thing from Southcaster, but I would also make the point, I would also support it elsewhere across the whole county, because the sooner the plan is out there, which I'm sure there will be parts of it which will cause concerns, the sooner there will be an idea, at least, there is a better future, a sustainable future for NHS services in Lincolnshire, the better. Because at the moment, the NHS have got themselves into the position, all they ever announce is piecemeal bad news about this, that and the others closing, and it's not surprising then that when they go to a meeting like there was in Skegness and Boston, people are very angry, people are very sceptical about what's been said, and it is a disappointment because I do believe there is a better way forward, working together which will make services better for Lincolnshire residents.
Thank you, councillor Hill. My next question is from councillor Julie Keely to councillor Nick Worth.
Good morning, Chairman, and congratulations on your appointment. My question is to councillor Worth. In today's society, one of the issues is the difference that different generations experience, and we are living not only in a more divided society in terms of wealth, but in experience as well. Obviously, the media do report bad news, we see lots of media representation about alienated youth. So my question is, why would you close Generate, which is the Birchwood Youth Centre? It represents a failure of youth services being outsourced. Don't you think it's about time that youth services are brought back in-house so that the youth of Birchwood get the services they deserve, and we have an inclusive policy towards the youth to get them engaged?
Thank you for that, councillor Keely. You're probably addressing that to the wrong portfolio holder because youth services doesn't come under my portfolio, so I'll probably hand this over to councillor Hill because he may be able to address that one for you. But it's nothing to do with the library, the two are separate.
She comes back and answers that, but I can assure councillor Keely, there is a lot of work ongoing in terms of providing youth services. Yes, we did reduce the budget, but similar to the library service, actually, what's happened is there are local communities now doing a lot of work. There's a lot of work going on in terms of supporting young people who need support, the fire service and others. So there's a lot of work going, but I'll let councillor Bradwell actually answer the question when she returns shortly. Thank you, councillor Hill. Well, we only have a few minutes left, so I hope we can get that answered. So my next question comes from councillor Alison Austin, and it's to Richard Davies, councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, Chairman, and congratulations on your appointment, and I hope we can welcome you in our sometimes-forgotten part of the work party. Thank you. Right, my question to councillor Richard Davies, although it could have been aimed at three other portfolio holders, I think you could entitle Fairer Funding for Boston. Picking up on the words of the leader, I see it, I must be a voice for Boston, whilst, of course, very proud to support the whole of this great county. Right, councillor Davies, looking at the reports of the executive members, Boston, which you know is the county's second town after Lincoln, has been shamefully overlooked with major...
Could I please have your question? We are drastically running out of time, please.
We've had some extremely lengthy replies. I think when I pressed my button very, very early, I think I have the right to have as much speak-talk as anyone else. I'm sorry for this...
I'm just trying to be fair to everybody.
Thank you. I believe in fair, you know, equality for all. Thank you. Right, as I was saying, I think it might be considered that Boston has been shamefully overlooked with major infrastructure projects. Please can I have confirmation that this council will do all in its power to attract funding, to ensure that Boston gets priority in improving all forms of infrastructure in the near future, and allow, hopefully, the town's economy to grow now that the barrier is under construction? And may I apologise for my heated response? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, personally speaking, I don't think you have anything to apologise for. It's nice to see such a vocal proponent of the local area. I would take issue with you on the suggestion that Boston hasn't received much investment. I'm not an expert on the barrier project, but I suspect it's a project that overwhelms any other spend anywhere else in the county in terms of likewise schemes, and in particular, from a highways perspective, to address the carnage that we do see on John O'Neill's way, in particular, we have invested millions of pounds over recent years. However, that is in the past. Looking towards the future, we now have the new Boston Transport Group, where ourselves and the Borough Council meet on a regular basis, and in particular, we're driving through a route for the Boston Distributor Road. That is going to be a massive piece of investment, however, it does need national government support. And what we really do need to see is some support from our MPs in particular to make sure the criteria that's delivered around the bypass scheme does fit Boston, because at the moment, it doesn't.
Thank you. Councillor Renshaw to councillor Davies, if you can be as brief as possible, councillor.
Oh, Chairman, congratulations.
Thank you.
A common problem in all urban areas of Lincolnshire has culminated in almost all of the residents of Coward, Walk and Lincoln signing a petition about the serious highways issues such as illegal parking and grass verge antisocial behaviour which blights their lives. My question to you is, what are your plans for dealing with these recurrent problems in future, as past actions have achieved absolutely nothing? And consequently, can I ask that you meet these residents... And consequently, can I ask that you meet these residents during school term to reassure them that we're all trying to do something about these serious highways problems?
Thank you. Good question, and it is a matter that affects us all over. Some of our verges, I think you could grow potatoes in there, that messed up by. The reality is, parking on a pavement and parking on verges is not an offence unless there's a TRO in place. I think longer term, I'm very keen to explore with members across the chamber some issues around pavement parking and whether we could adopt a different approach in terms of in certain locations, albeit the majority looking at banning it, with exceptions where appropriate. More locally, very happy to meet with you and do another world work, we have done one before, and potentially look at interim solution. We've tried it elsewhere, such as bollards in the verge can prove very effective. Takes a while to kick in, but it can work quite well.
Thank you, councillor Davies. We are out of time, but I will allow councillor Mrs Troy-Ballou, if you can ask your brief question, and ask for councillor Davies to give a brief answer.
Thank you, Chairman, and again, congratulations to both of you, Chairman and Vice-Chairman. Councillor Davies, in my division, I represent, when I go to parish council meetings, the main topic of conversation is highways, the state of the roads, from standing water to the lack of repair of potholes and roadside breakup. I would like to ask, what plans does his department have for the maintenance of minor roads, especially the ones in the rural division that I represent? Thank you.
Thank you. A few things. We've got an enhanced hatching programme that's going to be very much focused around U's and C's. We're also looking at instigating more, introduction more grips, because they often can cause damage where built-up water is and standing, as well as the recycling and in-city recycling we've been doing, which is a very cost-effective way of repairing some of our smaller roads, because it is very much the lifeblood of our community. The one thing I would say, and I do appeal to certainly dual-hatted members, those in particular on local planning authorities, that we need to see a different way of dealing with applications that come in on rural roads. I know we've been down in Baston before, looking at some of these rural roads where planning developments go forward, and there's really no view given by the local planning authority to the impact that's going to have on the road network. And we would ask that our local planning authorities work better with us to ensure that we get some investment in our road network when these new plans come forward.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Right, I'm just going to ask councillor Mrs Keely to reiterate her question, which is now to be addressed to Trish Bradwell, if we may have a brief question. Thank you.
Good morning, councillor Bradwell. In your absence, I asked the question, basically I said that we are experiencing in our society today more intergenerational inequality with the young suffering more than most. We see media reports about alienated youth, and in Parkward, what we're trying to do is build strong communities with the youth being a strand of being included in that. So what I'd like to know is, why is Birchwood Youth Centre, which name is Generate, closing today? Because I think it represents a failure of outsourcing of youth services, and isn't it about time that youth services are brought back in-house so the youth of Birchwood get the service they deserve? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I do apologise, didn't think I'd got any more questions. Well, I think there's a couple of things there, because the reason we had to reduce our youth service was to save money, and we've prioritised the areas that we think as a council we should have as a top priority, which is adult care, safeguarding children, fire and rescue, gritting roads, they're all things that we prioritise as really high priority which should be funded. And actually, the youth service we could no longer afford. Actually, at the time, young people weren't using it. There has been a youth service delivered on Birchwood, but because of learning communities no longer able to operate, that's now not, obviously the youth service can't work. But actually, Fair Play Football has gone into the Birchwood area as an interim and to see if we can find someone to run it. But, you know, across the county, we've got volunteers and that running youth provision, but at the end of, and we've carried on funding Fair Play Football, and they do netball, they do dance with young people as well. But it's just one of those things that we can't afford to do anymore. Our budget has dropped dramatically and we've had to cut things. One of them was a youth service.
Thank you for your reply, Mrs Bradwell. Right, moving swiftly on, oh, sorry councillor, do you want to speak?
Just a point of information, please, Mr Chairman. Was there some more that was still left? Because I did press my button early on, but it didn't seem to, did it register? Sorry? Has all them been submitted? Everyone, okay.
Okay, thank you. Right, moving swiftly on to item number 12, political balance on committees and subcommittees and allocation of places to political groups. We need a mover and a seconder, and councillor Mrs Brockwell.
Thank you, Chairman. This is basically a housekeeping paper to address the changes in the political balance. However, I do need to ask the council to accept one more recommendation, just for the completeness of the paper. We have actually already voted this through in agenda item number 10 on page 82, but we just need this wording as point number three, just for this paper, and it is, that the chief executive be authorised to make appointments to committees, subcommittees and those other bodies in accordance with wishes of group leaders. So could I ask, please, that as we vote on this paper, that that is included? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And do we have a seconder for that?
Not.
Thank you very much. I have no speakers, so we need to vote on that. So we have a show of hands, those in favour, please? Thank you. Any against? And any abstentions? That's unanimously carried. Straight on. Item number 13, appointment of chairman and vice-chairman of committees and subcommittees, accept the Lincolnshire Health and Wellbeing Board, Health Scrutiny Committee for Lincolnshire and Bourn Town Hall Trust Management Committee. A report by the executive director responsible for democratic services has been circulated, and we need a mover, and I believe that's councillor Hill.
Thank you. I'd like to move the appointment of chairman of committees and subcommittees. It is on schedule three, at the back of your order of proceedings. I won't read out the changes, but there are a few changes there, but they're there for all to see. So I'd like to move so moved, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Hill. And do we have a seconder?
I'd like to second that, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs Bradwell. We have no speakers, so we'll go straight into the vote. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. Any against? And any abstentions? Again, clearly carried. Thank you very much. Item number 14, calendar of meetings. A report by the executive director responsible for democratic service has been circulated, and again, is a mover for this item.
Thank you, Chairman. You've got the calendar before you, on page 94, and just get the meetings in your diaries, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And a seconder for that, please.
Mr Chairman, I'm happy to second on.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Newton. No speakers on that, so again, we need a vote on that. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Again, thank you very much. Keep pressing myself off. Item number 15 is the overview and scrutiny annual report. Again, a report by the executive director responsible for democratic service has been circulated, and again, is a mover and a seconder for this item. Councillor Parker.
Thank you. I'd like to think that I'll be proceeding a bit slower than the last couple of items, because I think this is a report that merits our attention. I'm here to ask the council to approve the overview and scrutiny annual report, and I think for most members, you know, certainly the vast majority, scrutiny work is one of the most important things that people do as councillors, side by side with helping residents with council issues. This is the opportunity for us to hold to account, in a sense, the work of the council, to check that we're getting value for money, that we're delivering quality services and that we're meeting the needs of residents, just three things. So in a sense, all of us here are about scrutiny work. That said, I think that we need to recognise that scrutiny work needs to make a difference, and that's one of the reasons why most people get to be on the council, is to try to make a difference. We think about the difference to the lives of people in communities, but we also can make a difference here in the council by both overviewing the work of the council but also scrutinising what's going on. So in one sense, these 25 pages tell the story of what's been going on in scrutiny committees over the last year. And at this point, I just want to thank everybody who's been involved in scrutiny, particularly the chairs and vice-chairs of scrutiny panels and committees, and members that have given their time to try to make sure that the council operates in a way that is effective and getting value for money and delivering quality services. So that said, there's 25 pages here of reading, and if anybody wanted to get a snapshot, if 25 pages can never be a snapshot, of the work that we do over a year, then it's here. You know, from adult social care through health scrutiny, all of which are big, important issues. Adult social care, for example, is the biggest chunk of money that we have a responsibility for, and health is a matter that is causing serious concern to people in Lincolnshire. Highways, we've heard the questions today, time after time, going to councillor Davies as the executive member, and highways is a big, big, important issue in a rural county like Lincolnshire. So if you just take adult social care and health and highways, they're three big areas. Children's services, for example, we all want to see our children well looked after and educated to a high standard, commensurate with their abilities. And here again, we've got lots of work going on in children's services, so they're the examples. I think that the point, as much as anything that I'd like to get across, is it's a two-way process. Two-way process in a number of ways. The first one is the relationship between the executive and scrutiny has to be important in the sense of the recognition of the dual responsibilities of members of the executive and members of scrutiny. And our new system, and it's not new for the people that are new members to this council, but from May, we set up a new system, following a review by East Midlands Council's director, Stuart Young, which was implemented from the beginning of May, and that's about having a three-tier structure, which is essentially a board and committees and panels. I'm interested in hearing, you know, briefly what people think of it. We are conducting a review, because it's been on operation for a year, but it is an opportunity in the council chamber to say something about it. Executive members can comment, scrutiny committee members can comment about what they think of the way that it's operating at the moment. The second two-way process, really, is about using scrutiny, I think, a bit more in the future, to be getting messages out to the people of Lincolnshire, because in essence, we're doing this scrutiny work not for our own benefit only, we're doing it on behalf of residents, people who could look reasonably to us to say, well, okay, you take these decisions, but are they effective? Do they actually meet the requirements or the expectations of what was being planned in the first place? And our job is to act as a reassurance vehicle for the people of Lincolnshire. And I think that perhaps we could be getting across some of the messages more clearly, so that scrutiny is used as a tool, a vehicle, for reassuring people about what's going on. I think the final point that I want to say is that scrutiny is only as good as the individual members there, and we have some high-quality councillors. I think it needs to be seen, though, side by side with the role of politics in this, because essentially, I think that we could, we should, we are best when we recognise that this is an intellectual exercise, this is a using personal experience exercise, and we do need to try to scrutinise without fear or favour from a party political point of view. And I think broadly speaking, that that has worked. But final concluding points is thoughts from the executive, thoughts from scrutiny members about what we're doing, any ways that we can be improved, and I commend this report to members.
Thank you, councillor Parker. And do we have a seconder for that? Councillor Woodton.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm happy to second this report and recommend the report to council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no speakers, so, oh, we have a speaker, councillor Mrs Austin.
I'm probably not the only member of this council, but I really appreciated reading these reports. I look at the agendas when they come to us with regularities and look at the executive decisions, but most of us, who balance quite busy lives, can't read every committee's meeting papers, nor can we attend a great number of extra meetings. So it's good to see what is going on in this county, and I'm proud of what we do compared with some of the other places around the country. So thank you for this report, and, you know, I think this council does well.
Thank you, councillor Austin, for your- I have your name on here, councillor Mrs Overton, don't worry. I'm going to ask councillor Sarah Dodds, she was next on my list. Sarah, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I do confess to being a complete scrutiny geek, and I think it's probably the most enjoyable aspect of council life here, other than obviously the community-facing work, is to really get your teeth into the policies, the pre-decision scrutiny. But I think the most important element of that, and I would really have a plea for council members here, is that the best scrutiny that we do is not in the committee room. The best scrutiny that we do is out there on the front line in our communities, actually looking and seeing how those discussions affect the frontline workers and our residents in Lincolnshire. So my plea for scrutiny moving forward in Lincolnshire for the future, in this county council, is that yes, those meetings are important, but that frontline contact with those people doing the work is really, really crucial if we're really going to get a handle on what it is. For example, I am privileged to be a member of the adoption panel, and for me to be able to have an opportunity where I'm working alongside the frontline social workers, the families and other agencies, is a really, really positive way that I can see those items that we discuss at children's scrutiny and corporate parenting being applied on the front line. And I think we should seize with open arms any opportunities that we have to do that. Last week, I had the opportunity to go and meet with the management of a social care provider in Louth, and again, it was really interesting to discuss with them, face-to-face, their reality of those things that we talk about in the committee rooms. So I do ask you to remember that our scrutiny function does not end in this building, that is only the start of it, and we really should be taking opportunities to extend it as far as we possibly can out into our local communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Dodds. And councillor Mrs Overton, over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I also wanted to thank all of those people who've been involved in scrutiny this year and done clearly a really important job for our residents. I'm thinking also that because we have this power of wellbeing, it really means that everything that affects our residents is our business, and that's why it's so useful when members are in touch with their communities, they can see what the big issues are for them, and they put those on the scrutiny committee's agenda to make sure that the council and any partners it wishes to bring in are working together to do their very best to get the best outcomes, to resolve those problems, or take our initiatives further to the benefit of our residents and for Lincolnshire. One of the things that I think's interesting also that I was involved with was the impact of Brexit on our rural county, and the breadth of the work that is covered by our council scrutiny groups is enormous and very valuable, and I think that's why, for me, it's actually, as has been said, one of the most important parts of the work we do. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Overton. And my final speaker is councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'd just like to, on behalf of the executive, say that we do appreciate all the work that scrutiny does, and I think we're very much welcome the improved focus that certainly the overview and scrutiny committee has now got, and obviously councillor Parker attends all of our executive meetings and then just summarises the issues for us, and- And I think, an example was the last executive meeting, we had a very long and detailed debate, following a discussion debate in the overview and scrutiny committee about the payroll, the future of payroll services. And that was really, I think, scrutiny and the executive working very well together and we actually examined very carefully all the issues involved. And I think we do rely on scrutiny to actually highlight those things to us which are of concern or indeed of good work. So, I think we do take their views very seriously, make our job a lot easier as well. The only plea I'd make is I think there are lots of members who actively engage with scrutiny. I think everybody needs to do that because it's all part of the duty of being a councillor to make sure you scrutinise actively. And there are many, many members in this chamber who do a really excellent job and I think we need to make sure everybody participates.
Thank you, councillor Hill, for that. Right, that's the end of the speakers on that, so we now need to vote on this issue. So, can I have a show of hands, all those in favour, please? Thank you. Any against? And any abstentions? That's clearly carried. Thank you very much. Item number 16 is the Monitoring Officer's Annual Report. A report by the monitoring officer has been circulated and, again, we need a mover and a seconder, and councillor Mrs Brockway.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, the paper is there for us all to see, giving the account of the monitoring officer's work during the year. I'd like to move the paper, please, Chairman.
Thank you. And do we have a seconder on that? Mrs Newton, I believe.
Second chair.
Again, no speakers on that, so, oh, we have councillor Parker, nothing came up, but I'll invite you to speak.
Okay. Councillor Mrs Brockway, in a sense, it's difficult, isn't it, to respond to a report here which is essentially factual, produced by an officer. I make that point and I say that because I'm not sure how much you were involved in the actual production of the report. Because behind each of these issues, and some of which have been reported to council, there are stories, aren't there? And it's about, when I spoke just a moment ago about overview and scrutiny management, it was about engaging and saying, 'Okay, what have we done and what can we learn and what about going forward and what do we think?'. In relation to people not being happy, and I'm focusing essentially on what we might call the ombudsman report, the complaints, it's about, what does this tell us about the state of affairs of the council? I understand very well, as we do as councillors, the monitoring officer obviously sometimes gets involved in our behaviour, but this is about the council's behaviour. And the council's behaviour essentially can be challenged through findings of maladministration. And this is on page 129. Some of which, the most serious reports, are public, okay, and we have to account for them, okay. Then there's the other decisions where, if we turn to page 130, we can see where we, in a sense, felt as though it was necessary to make payments to people because of distress through our, I'm not saying inability but failure, let's call it that without going overboard. So, on page 130, number three, we paid £500; number four, we paid £100; number five, we paid £1,000, and so on. And I'm just trying to get a feel for a picture, okay? And I know that you may not feel as though that's a fair question, but essentially, reports need an outcome, don't they? And what have we learnt from this? You know, the classic 'so what' question, okay? And below that, what we have are what we might call complaints that go through our normal complaints procedure. I know that's not the responsibility of the monitoring officer, but I just wonder what we think about this report. In other words, would we conclude from this report that it's a good report? Is it full? What's going to happen next to it? Because it does seem like it's a static document as opposed to an evolving document. And I'd just welcome your thoughts about the format of this report and the way that maybe the monitoring officer report could be dealt with differently in the future.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Our next speaker is councillor Julie Keely.
Mr Chairman, I'd just like to reinforce what my fellow councillor Parker has just said, that it is useful to know we cannot be perfect at all times, but what I would like is a little bit more detail. So, for example, on page 130, when councillor Parker said it was a static report, really we need to find information that we can learn from. So, if we look at item six on page 130, and just to quote, it says, 'There was some fault with the council's actions following a school admission appeal hearing for Mr A and Mr B's son. The council agreed to apologise for the injustice caused.' I think it would be really helpful if we know what the injustice was so that we can't make the same mistake again or we could put some extra consideration because just having injustice doesn't really help us. And, you know, I don't want to go through each one, as councillor Parker didn't, but it's just trying to make it a more working document. Thank you.
I seem to think there was a bit of a question there. Does councillor Mrs Brockway want to come back on that?
Yes. Well, have you got a second?
I have, Mrs Bradwell, unless you wanted to come in first?
Yes.
You, councillor Mrs Bradwell, okay.
Actually, the majority of complaints go to scrutiny. The first one here was only recently at scrutiny and scrutiny looked into the issues that were raised by... When you go to the ombudsman, you've mostly been through our complaints system. But, actually, I know there's nine here, but when I think about how many people were involved with adult care, and I'm looking at Karen, but it's about 30,000 or something like that, and likewise with children going to school, you know, every complaint, we don't want complaints, but these are a very small minority that have gone to the ombudsman. And where there are payments made, we are instructed by the ombudsman to either make a payment, we are advised to do that. So, yes, I mean, you mentioned item six where somebody had to appeal for a school admission. Well, actually, people, every year, appeal about school admissions, they just do. This person then took the process perhaps further. So, you know, I suppose we're saying it isn't good enough that people get upset with the service that they receive, but obviously, at the time, people, we have staff and they sometimes make mistakes and obviously, therefore, you know, we do get complaints. I think that's part of what we do, any service would get a few complaints. But I can assure you that these, and a number of these, we've reporting back to adult scrutiny because, obviously, they were interested and we want adults to actually, if we, I know with one of them, we put loads of things in place so that we couldn't have the same complaint. So, I think we are being scrutinised on these. I flagged them up in my area and they mostly are my area, I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs Bradwell. And I have councillor Kev Clark.
Thank you, again, Chairman. I'm a bit puzzled. On page 127, it mentions an informal complaint. Informal. When does an informal become a formal complaint?
Councillor Hill, I believe.
Usually, these issues are hopefully resolved informally, but if they're not resolved informally, then it has to go to the monitoring officer. The monitoring officer then has to decide whether to deal with it or then give it to the audit committee to actually resolve the issue.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Mrs Brockway, your name came up and then it disappeared off my screen. Did you still want to speak? Yes, you do, thank you.
Whoops. I'm on, yes? No, I'm not on? I'm on, right. Thank you very much, Chairman. To answer your question, councillor Parker, I wasn't involved in the production of this report. And I think to add to what councillor Mrs Bradwell said, there are some aspects of this report that you can't go into in more detail. For instance, if there's a potential for fraud, you've got to be very careful about naming people these things. Some of these things are examined privately to begin with. But, you know, obviously, one wishes to be as open as possible. And if you look at the beginning of the report, you will see that while the council is invited to receive the report, the monitoring officer will be pleased to discuss any part of the report with councillors individually. So, the extra information that people need is there to be had and it might be possible, if people feel it's necessary, to ask the monitoring officer to fill in bits of information further that we feel all of us might need to have. Thank you. And I'll wait until...
Thank you, Mrs Brockway. And I have councillor Sarah Dodds.
Thank you, Chairman. We'll be very brief. I think what is interesting reading the report and in the sense of the debate that we're having about it is that, one of the things I like to think about when we're in scrutiny, when we're in full council, is what is going to change as a result of the debates that we have and what will be different as a result of our time here? Because if nothing changes as a result of us being in this room, what are we doing? Why have we turned up today? And so I would want to see that every report that we have actually affects something, that there's the cause and effect, that there's a sense of change from what we do here. And I think this is, I think what councillor Parker was saying in this report is it feels very much like a tick box exercise as opposed to something that we're actually grasping and using as a vehicle for change and for reflection and for scrutiny, which is what we were talking about earlier.
Right, no further speakers on that, so we need to vote on that issue. So, a show of hands, all those in favour of the report? Thank you. All those against? And any abstentions? That's clearly carried. Thank you very much. Item number 17 is the Draft Engagement Strategy for 2018 to 2023. A report by the executive director for Environment and Economy has been circulated. And we need a mover and a seconder, and I believe it's councillor Woolley.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to propose that we move this paper. If I may just have a couple of moments to explain to you that it isn't draft at the moment, but the Community Engagement Strategy is due for a refresh. The last one was in 2013. What I'm hoping is, this is a public-facing document and that word 'public' is the key bit. I'm really hoping that we have put it in language that the public understands and the public know what to expect from us. So, hopefully, this is good old-fashioned plain English. I would also like to thank the councillors that took part in the workshop. It was a joint effort to actually put ideas in to bring this strategy forward and it was really, really helpful to have a number of people suggesting various points or improvements that we could have made on the previous one. So, as I've said, it is due for a refresh. The only major difference that I would bring your attention to is the recommendation of point two, which is that there is an expectation now within our organisation that in any form of engagement or indeed consultation, that colleagues within various directorates do go through our community engagement team, more than anything to make sure, not for them to take over, but more than anything to make sure that we get it right first time. Thank you. I would like to...
Thank you, councillor Mrs Woolley. I need a seconder for that? Have we a seconder for... Thank you, councillor Stokes. I don't seem to have any speakers on that, so we can go straight into a vote. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. Any against? And any abstentions? Thank you very much indeed. Right, moving on to, we have motions now, item number 18. Members are reminded of the rules of debate. These are set out below on your poppies. And I'll ask councillor Sarah Dodds to open your motion. Thank you.
I'm really happy to be able to move this motion today and I would ask all councillors to listen really carefully and support this and support the ideas and the motives behind it. Preparing this speech has really made me ponder about the meaning of exclusion. We can all probably think of times we have felt the emotional impact of being excluded from something, even if the reality wasn't quite the case. We can all empathise with those feelings of isolation, insecurity, a failure, of a lack of belonging. We can all empathise with that sense of rejection, even if it is more of a fear than a reality. Turning to the dictionary as I was preparing yesterday, I thought more deeply about the connotations of the definition. The definition is to shut out, to keep out, prevent the entrance of, or to shut out from consideration or privilege. If schools were made to write home to parents and say, 'Today, we have shut out your child permanently from this school' and were unable to use the institutionalised and clinical phrase, permanent exclusion, I wonder if that alone would change behaviour. Nationally, according to the 2017 report by the IPPR, Making the Difference, breaking the link between school exclusion and social exclusion, that act of shutting out happens to 35 children nationally every single school day. In 2016 to 17, that happened in Lincolnshire 180 times. Now, the fact that those figures are coming down in Lincolnshire when nationally they are going up is great and I applaud the vision that children's services have in bringing about that reduction. But 180 times is 180 times too many. Let's call it what it is, that is 180 times children have been failed by our school system. I want to talk to you briefly about a Lincolnshire boy I name. I'll call him Jacob, but that's not his real name and I have got permission from his family to use his story. He moved to secondary school in Lincolnshire in 2017 with a diagnosis in place of autism and a transition plan in place that should have worked. However, due to changes in school management and staffing, that plan never happened. He was not getting that level of support, that pastoral help that had been agreed and he struggled. Despite the best efforts of the team here at county, he received a permanent exclusion within his first half term. His behaviour was seen to be too much of a problem. The whole process took a massive emotional toll on the family and on Jacob himself. I was in daily contact sometimes with his family at this point. It was a really tricky time for them, it really, really was. He's now doing well in a new school with an EHCP plan in place, but he still had to go through that process of being shut out, a feeling that he wasn't worth as much as anybody else. But Jacob's behaviour was the manifestation of unmet needs, not the problem itself. Just think of those feelings I've discussed. Think of what it means to be that 11-year-old boy, being told that you are a problem, that you're not wanted. In this Making the Difference report that I have mentioned earlier by the IPPR, they highlight that the most common reason for exclusions was persistent bad behaviour. However, they point out that excluded children have a complex range of vulnerability. They are four times more likely to be in care, seven more times more likely to have sent, and 10 times more likely to have mental health issues. So, the evidence is clear, we must stop talking about these children as being problems but start seeing them as having vulnerabilities. It's the key responsibility of school leaders to educate all children, not just the ones that look good in Progress Eight and Eback Bookets. Despite an awareness of the need to look at the accountability framework regarding exclusion, successive green papers have failed to significantly change policy whereby schools would remain exempt for the future successes of the pupils that they expel. There is no incentive for schools not to exclude and that is the problem. That is what we're trying to help resolve as part of this motion. And that is what we're trying to help resolve as part of this motion. Making the difference states that there are fewer preventative services whose work supports children with complex needs. Meanwhile, there are increasing accountability and financial pressures on schools which heighten the risk of exclusion for pupils. This is the point. The national picture is making exclusions more likely, and that makes our success in Lincolnshire more remarkable. On a personal level, each excluded child is likely to suffer from long-term mental health concerns, a struggle to gain qualifications, be long-term unemployed, and enter the criminal justice system. Much of what we do in Lincolnshire is already good. And those of us who sit on the Children's and Young People's scrutiny will testify of the political and moral commitment to these challenges from officers and councillors alike in this council. The ladder of intervention, BOSS, and an improving range of commissioning for alternative provision, as well as welcome challenge to schools, is warmly welcomed. But what we're asking for in this motion is that all of us in this chamber become part of this, that all of us become part of that challenge to our school's community, and that all of us recognise that this impacts on all of our children in all of our divisions. On a moral and relational level, in terms of what we value as a council, it's our chance to welcome in and not shut out. It's our chance to promote children's ambitions and dreams, not to prevent their entrance into life, and to afford to the same the privilege that we would all want for our own children. And I move this motion to this chamber, and I ask for its support. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah Dodds. We need a seconder, and I believe councillor Parker.
Thank you. I'd like to formally second and reserve my right to speak later.
Thank you, councillor Parker. I've got one or two speakers. And the first on my list is councillor Chris Bruce. Councillor Bruce.
Thank you, Chairman. No one can possibly disagree that we nationally have a big problem with exclusions and the way we treat our young people in this country. But as an ex-teacher, I think there's an awful lot of blame. Social media has played its role in recent years. But there's been an increasing tendency, both nationally and not so much locally but nationally, to try and treat all young people the same. And I happen, deep down, to believe that the national lobbying we're talking about here needs to be, what we need to get away is from a national curriculum that tries to treat everybody alike, and where any divergence from a perceived norm or course is looked on as a means by which people can be punished. Treating children as individuals was what we used to do uniquely well in this country, and which we don't do as well as we used to do. And that has come down from a series of governments of all persuasions that have tried to treat everybody alike. And we're testing them, actually. I think it's probably right. It came over yesterday. It has an awful lot to do with schools being marked in a league table rather than the little individuals that we should be treating as individuals. I must admit, I've tried to think, and I'm not taking any credit, it's all credit to the young people. I never taught a child in the years I taught who was ever excluded, even for a day, but I treated them as individuals. And I had a head who actually said as a result that the reason he didn't like me was because I cared about the young people in my charge too much. I rest my case. We need to change nationally to start treating young people as individuals. And within a few years, this problem would disappear overnight.
Thank you, councillor Bruce. My next speaker is councillor Mrs Marion Overton. Mrs Overton.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I really appreciate councillor Sarah Dodds going to the trouble of getting all of that carefully put together and presented to us in that well-thought-out proposal. So thank you for that. The issue of exclusions is one. We also have a high number of young people who are home-educated. In other words, the ordinary school system does not match their needs. The exclusion issue is a problem, but it's not, it's actually an indication of a much bigger issue. And I think that's been raised. We do need to make sure that we do much more of the preventative work much further upstream before these children get to this condition. And there is so much that schools, some schools in particular, do a great deal. And I think it's really important that we are supporting that. And also the youth services, all of the other peripheral services. Our youth services used to have a social worker there as well. They used to have extra training to be able to help youngsters in a whole host of ways. We're not doing that now. We are expecting that to be done by voluntary people, who I think are doing an excellent job, but it's not exactly the same. So I do think we need to do more there in providing that additional support to catch these problems before they become problems, to make sure that children keep on the straight and narrow and enjoy doing what is of benefit to our communities. So I'm pleased to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Overton. And my next speaker is councillor Hilton Spratt.
Thank you, Chairman, and congratulations on your elevation. Now, there are some elements of this I support. Nobody in their right mind wants to see pupils or students excluded from school or college. But I've been a college lecturer, and let me tell you, you have to do an awful lot at the institution I worked at to get excluded or thrown out. I have to tell you, members of council, I think this motion before us today, not only is it condescending, it is patronising, in my opinion. You have to do a lot. We talk about Jacob, fictitious name, of course. But what did Jacob do to get excluded from school? He would not, I suggest, be excluded because of his autism. He must have done something. I'm suggesting to you, members of council, that we're looking at this from the wrong angle. What about the victims of the people who are excluded? What about the dinner lady who I spoke to the other day, who was frightened to serve students at the school she worked at because of the effing and the blinding and the verbal and the physical abuse? If you have children at school who are abusive, who are out of order, who are violent, they need to be taken out of that situation altogether until a remedy is sorted out. Because the safety of other people, in some instances, in extreme circumstances, is just as important as the rights of that individual person. And I'll tell you something else, ladies and gentlemen. Something I found particularly wet in this particular speech, and it's the penultimate paragraph. We would like to move schools away from the traditional approach to challenging behaviour. Now, I tell you what, members of council, when I had parent's evenings and open nights, I had parents coming in saying they wanted more schools and teachers to adopt traditional ways of dealing with students. I think this is an absolute nonsense, this speech. There's been a committee set up to look at this. This speech has been brought in prematurely. I think it's, we should take it for what it is. It's blatantly political. It should be totally kicked out and wait for the committee that's sitting to come to its sensible conclusions and deliberations. And I don't know what anybody else is going to do, but I'm going to vote against this motion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Spratt. My next speaker is councillor Robert Fokes. Councillor Fokes.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, the inclusive Lincolnshire strategy started life out in 2016 in response to Lincolnshire's position as pretty much the worst-excluding county in all of England. Can you hear me on this? And so at the heart of it is the Lincolnshire Ladder of Behavioral Intervention, or what's called the ladder. And its aspiration is to actually get zero exclusions. In common with most children's services programmes, the nub of it is early intervention, which is why, of course, it's a ladder. Because if you can knit something in the bud early, then problems don't get worse. Now, as chairman of the Children's Scrutiny Committee, this strategy came, first of all, to the committee in July 2017, in January, and it's also due again in September. And just after the January meeting, we decided we'd form a working group to look into the actual mechanisms in more detail to get a real good handle on it. And the working group met for the first time a week ago on, that's last Friday. It'll have a couple more. And then its recommendations will be put to the scrutiny committee, probably in the September meeting. And then we can then discuss it, make recommendations to the executive councillor, and progress towards our aspiration of zero exclusions. So whilst it's gratifying that the Labour Group are supporting the work of the council in this field, I think at the moment it's premature to accept this motion. And so I recommend that we should vote against it and wait for the working group to publish its own recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fokes. My next speaker is councillor Colin Matthews. Councillor Matthews.
Thank you. I'm still at work in education. I was at work in education yesterday. I work around the country. I'm an Ofsted inspector. I'm a former head teacher. I provided advice to government in a number of areas. Lincolnshire has a highly-regarded support plan for excluded pupils and spends more than is required to to underpin those support services. We are a good authority, to use old language. If we have one failing, it is that we are too honest in the way we interpret the criteria. So actually, we tell the truth about excluded pupils. Other authorities could be guilty of... They don't report as highly as we do. They call them different things. I'll try and find a nice word. But I commend this coming to the committee. It's just come at the wrong time. Councillor Dodds is on the working group that met for the first time last week. And therefore councillor Dodds will be able to shape the working group's recommendations when it comes back to scrutiny, of which councillor Dodds is also a member, and then report in due process. But I do want to say, I want to praise councillor Dodds, really, for the language she uses. She talks about the school community. I am part of the school community, and I'm going to tell you a story in a minute. But I'm also a frontline contact person. So yesterday afternoon, I was the duty manager in a building where a six-foot-two-inch, 16-year-old young man went berserk. There is no better word for it. He has a full ECHP, Educational Healthcare Plan. He has a one-to-one care assistant. He is in small groups. He was asked to do something, and he chose instead to smash a filing cabinet with his fist, to push the two lady members of staff aside, and to throw objects at other members in that classroom. He was placed in isolation, he placed himself in isolation. He went to a classroom where teaching should be taking place. The children were vacated. Two members of staff monitored him, sat with him, eventually burst into tears. However, I was asked to deal with two traumatised members of staff. Because just imagine, had he not hit that filing cabinet and pushed the staff, but done it the other way round, the wellbeing of those staff would have been severely disadvantaged. The whole of the school was disrupted during the afternoon because a senior management team meeting had to be called. Classes had to be re-timetabled to not use that room. Parents had to be called. It became very, very complicated. At the end of the day, we had a senior management team meeting, and it was agreed that he would be excluded for five days. And it was for his best interests, because he needed a cooling-off period. An ECHP, Educational Healthcare Plan, meeting has been called for next Wednesday morning, and I'll be attending that. And we will make sure that he receives the correct... It's not in this county, incidentally. It's in a county that doesn't have as good support as we have.
Thank you, councillor Matthew.
Thank you.
You've gone well over your time. Thank you. Thank you, councillor. I will please ask members to look at the time, because we are getting close to lunchtime. And my next speaker, Alexander Moore. Councillor Moore.
Thank you, Chairman. I think we can all agree with the sentiment of the motion. And I'm sure we all agree with the great work that Lincolnshire County Council does to reduce exclusion rates within our county. However, the timing of this motion is somewhat baffling to me. We currently have a working group, which is taking a deeper dive into the behavioural ladder that we have in Lincolnshire. It's taking a deeper dive into exclusion rates and what we can do to better our work. That was set up by the Children and Young People Scrutiny Committee in March. Both I and other members in this chamber are all part of that team on that working group, doing what we can to then report back to the scrutiny committee in the autumn. So I feel that for the council to approve this motion today, it would be somewhat imprudent to do that before the working group has been able to report on its findings to the scrutiny committee. Therefore, I will not be supporting the motion today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Rob Kendrick.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't want to really reiterate all the remarks that colleagues have made, because I think councillor Fokes in particular has covered the key issues here. Whilst we agree we should have a reduction in exclusions, it's totally premature. And we're all on a working group, the numbers of councillors involved in that, and particularly councillor Dodds. And I'm very surprised that this motion has come forward, because we're going to work on this issue and then produce a report by the autumn. So I think it's totally premature. And along with other colleagues, I feel I cannot support it.
Thank you, councillor Kendrick. My next speaker, councillor Mrs Alison Austin.
Thank you, Chairman. And I'll keep calm.
You have three minutes on your specialist subject.
Well, as a parent, a grandparent, and a former teacher in secondary schools, albeit grammar schools, where I assure you, you can get issues. Obviously, we don't want exclusions. I don't know enough about the working group, about its remit. So I'm probably going to chicken out and abstain, because I am very sympathetic with the motion. But if I don't know enough about it, then I don't want to vote against it. However, I think one speaker who perhaps is out of touch with children, for instance, young people with part of the autism spectrum. You cannot say one size fits all. And I've had to move one of my children around because they were clearly not in the right school. But I could afford to do that. I was able to take a detached professional view as well as that more emotional parental view. And most parents do want to work for the best of their children, but whilst respecting the rest of the school. However, we are aware that there are some parents who think it is the school's duty to discipline their child. Now, I think probably within this county, we do work with problem families. And of course, the key is to try and anticipate these problems before they ever arise. However, we can't obviously anticipate sometimes the violent outburst, which has been referred to by another speaker. I want to know more about this working group before I can honestly vote. So I've made my short statement, and we'll now sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Austin. And our next speaker, councillor Christopher Reed. Councillor Reed.
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of quick points. There's been a lot of speakers that have come out from, you know, having worked in the education arena. Obviously, I haven't had the luck, but I'm not long out of education myself. So I've seen firsthand sometimes the impacts that you can have from people that have difficulties in mainstream education, and indeed have family members who were excluded from school. And in some circumstances, I'm sure they won't mind me saying, it was probably the best thing to do for them. Obviously, as has been said before, there's no one size that can fit all here. But, and while obviously it'd be great not to have anyone excluded from school, sometimes, you know, you need to look at the needs of the school as an entirety and the other students also. And just finally, I want to agree with councillor Fokes. Given what councillor Dodds spoke earlier about, the importance of scrutiny and the scrutiny panels, it seems sensible that we allow the scrutiny panel and the working group to, you know, get on with the job they've got and look into this further before... group to get on with the job they've got and look into this further before making any decisions on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Mrs Bradwell?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Obviously, this is a very important issue, and obviously, council has for a number of years now been trying to reduce exclusions. As we've heard, the worst thing that a young person can have happen to them is not go to school. But we do understand sometimes, you know, schools have to protect people within them. We've listened, I think, to members of the scrutiny panel about what's happening. Our chairman of scrutiny has explained how scrutiny are taking this very seriously and monitoring regularly reports on the level of exclusions, which have fallen dramatically this year. And also, we've heard from other members of the committee who sit there as well, saying that, you know, they're sitting on the working group, as is councillor Dodds, and they've only had one meeting, but they're very committed to looking at how the Lincolnshire ladder is working, and if there can be any changes from the work they do to make it even better. So I actually do agree as well with my colleagues that this is very early to be discussing councillor Dodds's recommendations here, albeit that we all understand about young people, as I've said. It is very important that we are able to offer young people a pathway through their education which fits for them. As we've heard, some children, at some times in their life, find it very, very difficult. It can be a home situation, that they can't understand probably why mum and dad aren't together anymore. There's sometimes very good reason why a young person just can't cope at a particular time, and they go and kick off, and then they find themselves excluded. So I do believe more work needs to be done on this. I think this is a bit early in the day to be making decisions like that, and has been said, we will bring a report back when scrutiny has had a real good look at this and come up with any recommendations that the council will take forward. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs Bradwell. That was the last of the speakers. I'm now going to ask Robert Parker, as he reserved his right to speak. Councillor Parker?
With one exception, and that was councillor Spratt, I think that this has been conducted in a very calm, measured way, and I thank everybody for that. The one emotional outburst, I didn't think, did any credit to us as a council at all. Because when we're talking about seriously important issues, I think the people of Lincolnshire expect us to deal with them in a calm, measured tone. For the benefit of what you don't know, this motion was added to the last part of it, the last paragraph, the according the Lincolnshire County Council agrees to continue robust advocacy through the help of a leading member of the Conservative group. So this motion was ours with the addition of a leading member of the Conservative group. So if we start from that position, I think we agree that there is all party support for the general tone of which the vast majority of councillors have addressed this meeting today. We support the sentiments, don't we? But sometimes, we have to move from scrutiny, and I'm a big advocate of scrutiny, I just presented the overview and scrutiny management report, we have to move to make big statements that embrace the whole of the council. We actually have to say this is where the council stands, not the executive particularly, and not scrutiny, but the council. Okay? And we wanted to make a declaration to that effect. Okay? It's important, isn't it, for the reasons that councillor Dodds mentioned, was about what does the word exclusion mean? It's a precise word, isn't it? And it means that children, and we're children and young people, and we're not arguing for one moment, despite the emotion that was brought in by two speakers, not just one, about telling stories about how bad life can be, and as though we are supposed to be, because we've moved this motion somehow wet and weak about the life, we recognise that some children do need to be excluded for good reasons. So don't let the Labour group with the brush of saying that we are not accepting our responsibilities. But as individual councillors, each of them, each of us, I would guess, has a school, be it primary or secondary, in your locality, and do you know how many children are excluded, and whether or not the numbers are going up or down? That's the sort of level that we wanted to get across to this council, is that we're all corporate parents, right, accepting broad responsibilities for what's going on in our area. Do we each of us know what the exclusion rate is in each primary and secondary school in our area, and would we like now to find out whether it's going up or down? That's the sort of message that we wanted to get across. The big, broad approach. Okay, that this motion still has recognition here in this council chamber, that it's got value. That's the point why we brought it to this council, and I'm sure that now people will know a lot, lot more than they did before, however ill-spoken, at least some people have been.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Okay, right. Before we take the vote, I'll just ask Sarah Dodds if she wants to add anything briefly. Thank you, you have the right.
Chairman, I'm really puzzled about the discussion about the working group, because the motion is very clear, we're talking about a school accountability framework that discourages exclusion. I have the Terms of Reference of the Working Group on my computer as we speak, that is not on it. So I'm sorry, but that's just not a relevant criticism. There's nothing about school accountability frameworks within the Terms of Reference of the Working Group. So let's just put that one out there now. Councillor Brewis, thank you very much for your comments and support. I do appreciate it. You're absolutely right about the curriculum issues, and I think actually there's a synergy here between that issue and economic development. I think if we had a better, broader curriculum, not only would it help in terms of managing behaviour for children who don't fit that very stringent academic criteria, but we would also be addressing the skills gap that is such a concern to many of us here as well. Councillor Overton, yes, I agree. I think the problems that we've seen, the rise in exclusions nationally, are symptomatic of a systematic failure within the education system to actually have a holistic view that benefits all children. Councillor Hilton Spratt, categorically, without any shadow of doubt at all, because I know the family and the boy, he is not a fictional boy, it's a real story, he did not hurt anybody, he did not abuse anybody, he is a perfectly lovely boy, who I would be happy to have in my home at any point. He was scared and he was worried, and the evidence from this report is clear, that the evidence to justify school exclusions is just not there. We are talking about children who are not having their pastoral and their needs met, and that is why situations are escalating, not because these are bad kids. You did talk about abuse, you did talk about violence, you did talk about Jacob being a fictional story. Those things are not true. Saying it's political, we are all politicians, we're all involved in politics. I think the only political problem with this motion is potentially it's from this side of the chamber and not the other, but I'll leave that there. Rob, children's working scrutiny are absolutely doing a great job, both in the last term and this term, in looking at school exclusions, and the fact it's coming down is largely a measure of the work of the scrutiny committee here. This is in addition to that, it's in addition to the working group, it is not undermining it. It's looking at the bigger picture of what's happening in education policy nationally, not the detail of us as Lincolnshire necessarily. It's about using our position of strength as an authority who is booking the national trend, and using that position of strength to say, we know what's work on a national, we know what is working for us on a national level, let's use that to actually change the situation, not just for Lincolnshire, but for kids everywhere.
Thank you, councillor Dodds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We must press on. Right, we now need to vote on this issue. Can we have a show of hands, all those in favour of this motion? Thank you. All those against? And any abstentions? Thank you. That is clearly lost. Thank you, members. We're almost at the end of the meeting. I would remind members to collect their posts from their pigeonholes after this meeting. And as we all know, there is a highways member engagement session in this chamber. I was just coming to the time. It was planned for three o'clock. Apparently, the officers are on standby, and it has been brought forward to 2.30, so we're not hanging about. Okay? So that's how democratic services work here. Thank you very much, members. Enjoy your lunch. Thank you.